I'm going to call the meeting of the Salem Housing Authority to order if the recorder would please call the roll.
Commissioner Tesler? Absent. Commissioner Nanki?
Here.
Commissioner Claussen?
Here.
Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Clem?
Here.
Chair Bennett?
Here. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no one signed up for public comment on the housing authority agenda. Is there anyone that would like to comment on the housing authority agenda? Counselor Nanki, the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Cannon to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? Any objections? Consent calendar is approved. Got a vote, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody raise your hand.
Dick Ditterman! Terrifical Housing Authority!
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? Right, thank you. Andy, do you have anything to say about the program management report?
I do, thank you, Ambassador Chair. Couple of quick announcements. I'm gonna start with two announcements that aren't in the program management report. The commission authorized applications for two different federal grants back in April. One of those, Capital Fund Community Facilities Grant, which was proposed to finance a early childhood education center up at Glen Creek in conjunction with our partner Midland Valley Community Action Agency. We heard that we were not funded for that. The second grant is a Section 3 Coordinator Grant that we applied for in conjunction with West Valley Housing Authority and Marion County Housing Authority to bring in a more regional approach to the coordination of low-income job opportunities and contracting within the region. We weren't funded on that. So, small amount of money in each of those grants, and as always, some larger cities to the north are successful, and some larger cities even farther north are successful. But we'll keep trying for those sorts of opportunities. I do, however, want to mention that in the program management report, we've received funding for a family self-sufficiency program for this next year, which helps us to provide direct service to our clients for job training, economic development, and personal growth, if you will. And finally, this past week, we started the asset management and portfolio preservation training. It's one of the resolutions in this that you adopted tonight, which is 16 months of saturated asset management training to help build the agency's capacity so we can manage our rental housing for the long term in a way that makes a viable, continued viability for our clients. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. I think at some future date it'd be interesting to hear some more information on the self-sufficiency program, how many clients are being served, how many find a job, how that's going.
Would be pleased to.
Great. There are no special orders of business, no unfinished business, no new business, without objection.
I'm gonna adjourn this.
This is the Salem City Council meeting for October 10, 2011. I'm sorry, this is the urban renewal meeting for October 10, 2011. Would the recorder please call the roll? Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Tesler?
Absent.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member Claussen?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Thomas?
Here.
Board Member Cannon?
Yes.
Board Member Clem?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here.
All right. Welcome, everyone. In our first order of business this evening is a report from boards, commissions, and committees. Do we have anyone who's signed up to speak this evening? Derek Milton has signed up to speak this evening. You'll have, is it three minutes for urban renewal? Three minutes, and the amber light will come on at the end of two, and the red light comes on when your time is up.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Derek Milton. I live at 2517 Dan Avenue Northwest, Salem, Oregon. I am the board, I'm sorry, the chairperson for the board, for the North Gateway Redevelopment Board. And I'm just here to give you guys some updates today. Basically, regards to the Portland Road Phase 2 is still our top priority for Engrab. Phase 2 will be completely reconstructed, the rest of the Portland Road through the north side of this intersection from the railroad underpass. At this point, it appears final design could start in 2013 or 2014. Portland Road and Hyacinth Street, it's $1 million from the agency to work what the Public Works with the Hawthorne Avenue-Hyacinth Street Bonds project to be completed in the fall of 2013. Expands agency funds, as this is part of the bigger contract at a time when the costs are lower, to get the parts of Phase 2 of Portland Road done. We will get undergrounding of utilities completed through this intersection with an island added, which will immediately improve the whole intersection. Going on to the railroad underpass lighting project, vandal-proof lighting was designed and placed in the underpass. Public Works was able to fund and contract for main drainage correction, excuse me, you guys, to help alleviate drainage issues on the west side. Concerns remain regarding trash and undesirable activities, and this is critical, the north and south connections for pedestrians and bicyclists. The Claggett Creek Wetlands, approximately 15 acres, a site with eight acres of wetlands restoration enhancements, and the seven acres of unplanned upland buffer in their last years of monitoring. In additions to the wetlands and other natural features of the floodwater storage, that has reduced, my light's blinking, reduced flooding in the Salem Kaiser. This has turned into a nice, okay, does the light keep blinking the whole time?
Sorry. You're okay.
It's messing me up.
Okay.
I'll just skip this a little bit faster. So, it's getting moving. We do have about $100,000 possibly coming back January of 2012. We also, the grant program is doing well. We also requested the agency boards to give us more funds. And then, we also supplied a letter to the agency board submitting regarding the Rose Garden mixed-use area. On behalf of the board, suggested changes, looking for development for this important piece of the property, which is also owned by Larry Epping. So, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Milton?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you chairing that urban renewal area and bringing a report to us this evening. Thank you very much. All right. I see we have no one signed up for public comment this evening on urban renewal issues. So, we'll go to the consent calendar. Board Member Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar with the following pull. 4.3C by Counselor Nanki, and deletion, if I'm correct, Madam Manager, 4.3D.
That's correct.
Second.
Was that Cannon? Thank you. It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Cannon to adopt the consent calendar with the notation that item 4.3C is pulled by Member Nanki, and we are deleting item 4.3D.
Madam Mayor, if I may, may I also add that there is a correction, just note on your yellow sheet, a correction on 4.3A's report.
Second, Commissioner.
It's been noted that item 4.3A is a correction on the agenda, and that we've removed 4.3D. That's moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Cannon. Do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar with these changes?
So moved.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Member Nanki, would you like to speak to item 4.3C?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Nanki, seconded by Member Clem, to accept the recommendation on item 4.3C. All those in favor say aye.
Can I speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Counsel, Member Nanki, you would like to speak.
Yes, as I was reading through the report, it was, it's like, we got $225,000, and it says that we still need 97 to complete it. I voted originally against this because of the error funds that were involved with it. So, when I talked to Peter Fernandez today, it was like, how are we 97,000 short, almost 100,000 off of a, you know, a $225,000 project? And actually, it'd be nice if Peter could just add what he told me about, because it kind of follows the strings that are attached to federal monies.
Certainly. Mr. Fernandez, would you like to enlighten us?
Thank you, Counselor Nanki, Mayor. Peter Fernandez, interim Deputy City Manager. Very simply, when we do projects that are either funded with federal transportation dollars, or we are required to pull permits that have a federal nexus, they come with certain requirements, certain additional requirements. In this case, what has happened is that, because it's federal money, there have been requirements attached related to doing archaeological, additional archaeological studies, and selected other studies, that if this were strictly a city-funded project, we would not have to do. So, part of the running over budget on this project has been the additional requirements imposed by, in this case, federal funding. So, that's the issue.
If I may just follow on that, we saw that with Kubler doubling the cost because of copper removal. And actually, Peter brought up the park property, new one, Battle Creek Golf Course, where we actually have to do a lot of testing, because we're using some federal funds, and the school district using none doesn't have to do any. So, I always thought the local government was supposed to take care of those things we knew best, and the feds were supposed to leave us alone, but it doesn't seem to be the case.
Member Clem?
Thank you, Madam.
Oh, Mr. Fernandez, did you want to?
I just wanted to amplify on Counselor Nanki's comment. On Battle Creek, the issue, there is no federal funding on Battle Creek, but there is a permit nexus, because we're crossing Wall Creek. And because of that, we've had to do some additional archaeological testing there, where, and I use the example, the school district is building a school on an adjacent 10 acres, and they were not required to do that testing, because they don't have, there is no permitting. There's no wetland or any other permit nexus for them to do that. So, that's just amplified, but there's no federal funding in Battle Creek.
Member Clem?
Yes, and thank you, Member Nanki, for bringing this up. This is an important trail component that we've been chasing for over two years now. And it not only adds to the cost, the amount of money that the federal funding brought to this project wouldn't have been needed if it were just a city or a state project. So, it's interesting that you get money from the feds, they promote that they help with projects for bike and pedestrian, and then when you get done at the end of the project, and you look at the additional cost, it was about the same amount of money the feds contributed to the project. So, not only in cost, which the federal government provided some funds for, but the reality of it is, this is a simple trail, you know, less than an eighth mile long, through a park that we already own, and it's gonna hit the two-and-a-half-year mark before it's even built. So, we need to be thinking about, when folks come to us and say, here's money, federal grant programs for bike and pedestrian, particularly even through a park, we ought to make sure we look at all the options.
Counsel, Member Nanki?
Yeah, and if I can follow up one more thing, because I asked, didn't we know this beforehand? It's no, you don't know what they're gonna require you to do until you actually get into the permitting program after you take the money. So, we need to go in with our eyes wide open on the front end, and just know what the possibilities are, and see if there's some way we can kind of guess at what they may make us do. Keep that great with government.
Yeah. Okay. Other comments? Then, I've lost track of where we are, and our esteemed city attorney is over here. I'm looking for my, we have a motion on the floor.
Counselor Clem, second, or Commissioner Clem, second.
Thank you. All right. Motion on the floor by Member Nanki, seconded by Member Clem, to accept the staff report as presented. Right? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. I see that we do not have any unfinished business or public hearings this evening, and no new business. So, there's no further items to discuss. This is the adjournment of the urban renewal agenda. Are we ready? Okay. This is opening the meeting of the Salem City Council for the evening of October 10, Would the recorder please call the roll? Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tesler?
Absent.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor Claussen?
He'll be right back.
Ominarily absent. Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Thomas?
Here.
Counselor Cannon?
Yes.
Counselor Clem?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
All right. We have a period of time at the beginning of our meetings now for council comment. Right before that, I'm going to discuss additions, deletions, revisions. You all have a sheet in front of you, and you see that we have added a proclamation this evening on Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we have added, we have removed an item 11.2 from the agenda. 11.2A. So, that's removed, the proclamation is added, and then we have a correction and an addition under the action items in the consent calendar. So, I'll leave those to Counselor Bennett to describe. Is that right? All right. Okay. So, I want to, first of all, have council comment. I believe Counselor Bennett has a comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to call the council's attention to the fly sheet they've received, and let you know you'll be getting a calendar. We have a series of public hearings and also work sessions, and it's a pretty aggressive agenda for the next couple of months. We'll be needing to make sure that we have quorums present for those. These are extremely important work sessions. We're dealing with the airport, with the transportation system plan, strategic planning for downtown, parking downtown, and water supply management. And so, we'll need to have people present for those. Just wanted to make sure I highlight those for you, and I believe Mr. Fernandez will be supplying you a follow-up calendar to make sure these end up on your agenda.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just since we hadn't met since the League of Oregon Cities Annual Conference in Bend a week before last, where the mayor, Counselor Thomas, and I attended. Wonderful conference. It will be in Salem next year, so we'll be getting our partners together as far as for tours and financial support, because there is a small financial requirement to host the conference. If you think of anything that might be cool for a whole bunch of spouses and guests that come with these people to do, let me know. I'm gonna start putting that together, because my wife went, you know, this one is like, there's the tours on Thursday, but then Friday and Saturday, which is when the main conference is, these people don't really have a good system to figure out where they can go and what we have to offer them. So, I'll be starting to put that together. I'll keep the council informed in the loop and get feedback as well.
Great, thank you. Other comments? All right. My comment, I have a couple of comments following up on Counselor Nanki. Congratulations to Counselor Nanki for being successfully elected to the Board of Directors of the League of Oregon Cities. We appreciate your service on there. You represent our city, you represent our region, and I know you do a fine job, because I was there hearing about that this last week. So, thank you for your willingness to add one more group of meetings to your life. Speaking of meetings, we just, in the urban renewal meeting, we just adopted the budget calendar for the urban renewal, and you might note that October 19, Wednesday, the 19th, at 5:30 is our first budget meeting with the Urban Renewal Board budget, urban renewal budget. And then, the next one after that is November 10, and then November 16, and then our lives are taken over by budget. So, just please look at that attachment also, and get those dates on your calendars as well. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
It'd be nice for some of us that actually connect up to City email to just shoot the, like, the fly sheet out as appointments. That way, they're automatically in ours, and it beeps, and it tells me to come here.
We'll do that. Okay. All right, great. All right. Okay. All right. We're gonna get started here. We do have a proclamation this evening that I'm particularly pleased to be presenting, and I think I have a microphone that even is not on.
Actually, that helps with making sure we have a horn, too.
Is it on? Is this on? Oh, good. I'm live. Okay. There we go. And there are several people that are joining us this evening to receive the proclamation. And it certainly is my pleasure and my honor to have you in the council chambers. Walt Beglow, our Marion County District Attorney, Jane Downing, who's the Executive Director of the Mid Valley Women's Crisis Service, and Kim Larson, Director of Victim Assistance Division at the Marion County District Attorney's Office. Welcome to all of you. It really is a pleasure, having worked with you in various ways over the years, to have you now in the council with us. So, the proclamation is, "Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security and humanity, due to systemic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly, and whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economic, racial, and societal barriers, and are compounded by societal indifference. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, with 31 people being murdered in Oregon in the last 12 months as a result of domestic violence. And whereas Mid Valley Women's Crisis Service received more than 19,000 calls on their hotline last year, and provided more than 4,000 nights of shelter to 229 individuals, with nearly one-half of those sheltered being children. And whereas the Marion County District Attorney's Office received nearly 1,200 reports of domestic violence in the last year. Whereas the strength of our community is founded on healthy families and safety of victims of domestic violence, especially women and children, and must be ensured by a coordinated community response to end domestic violence. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Anna Peterson, proclaim October 2011 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and resolves that domestic violence will not be tolerated any longer in our community, and we renew our commitment to make our community violence free." It's my pleasure to present this proclamation to you, our District Attorney. And to ask if you have a few words you'd like to say, or share with us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the invitation to be here tonight. My name is Walt Beglow, Marion County District Attorney, and it's nice to be back in the city. I want to let you know that we're here to talk a little bit about the great partnership that we have with the city of Salem in our efforts to combat domestic violence. We're here to talk about how domestic violence is still a prevalent and dominating impact every day, day in and day out, for women and children in our community. Last year, from just the city of Salem, we had 574 cases investigated, and we prosecuted well over 450 of those. And the fact that those cases were put together in a dynamic and effective way is testament to the resources and the commitment that your city has to challenge domestic violence. What else we've seen is some great community efforts, and we have aligned a lot of our efforts, not only within our office through Kim Larson and our Victim Assistance Program, but from your community frontline services in Mid Valley Women Crisis Services, and that's Jane Downing and her leadership. And for years, we've been aligning our efforts in the community and speaking with cities. Let me highlight two other important things for all of you. In the enforcement world, I have to tell you, in terms of the dynamics of domestic violence, we have found that one of the crimes beyond those 574 cases is called strangulation. It's kind of advanced behavior by those who are It's kind of advanced behavior by those who are violent against women. They choke them out, they cut off their air, and it's part of that dynamic. And we filed over 120 cases this year in Marion County alone, many of which came from the city of Salem. And we went to the legislature, and there were a lot of champions, and created a felony strangulation, right alongside the crime of assault felony, where children are present or it's a repeat offender. And I can assure you, we see many, many repeat domestic offenders, batters, who utilize this power, this tool, over their loved ones. So it's a very somber topic we're here, but we're very grateful for your commitment. I would like to allow this great team to share just a little bit. And again, it's just a pleasure to be here, to work alongside your great team. I have to say, Chief Moore and I, and your commitment to the Domestic Violence Response Team, which was nationally recognized. It is a model nationally in terms of responding domestic violence right at the city street level, so to speak. You have really kind of put your money where it needs to be and your resource and your good people. So let me let Kim say a few words, and we'd love to end with Jane and her efforts alongside ours.
Thank you. My name is Kim Larson. I'm Director of Victim Assistance with the DA's Office, like Walt talked about. I'm also Chair of the Marion County Domestic Violence Council. And on behalf of the council, we really appreciate your willingness to issue this proclamation, recognizing this month. Probably the primary focus of our work at the council is to coordinate our response to victims of domestic violence, so that victims have the response in our communities that they deserve to have with specialized and trained folks to provide that service. And certainly, one of the strengths of our council are the strong partnerships that we have with people. And as Walt mentioned, the Domestic Violence Response Team that you have here with the city of Salem, with the police department, is key in the services that we provide to victims. We have those advocates who are on scene 24 hours a day, ready to respond, and they connect victims with my program, with advocates in my program, with advocates in Jane's program. And we work on a daily basis with those advocates, trying to make sure that we're surrounding victims with services and trying to have that uninterrupted flow of services for victims, so they're not feeling like they're jumping from place to place. So those partnerships are incredibly important and is something that you can be proud of in your community, that you have a strong team like that to respond. And certainly, one of our stronger partners as well is Jane's program with Mid Valley Women's Crisis Services. So I'm going to...
Thank you, Kim and Walt. And I just want to let you know, Mayor, that I'm going to be speaking in a few moments if my throat will hold out. Excuse me very much. And so I'm not going to take very long, but I just want to commend the district attorney. Walt and I and Kim have been traveling around to many different cities in Marion County and just talking about this issue. And I think that's so wonderful to have that kind of partnership in our community. Our program and Kim's program train the Domestic Violence Response Team folks from the city of Salem, so that partnership is very large in our community, and that's unusual. What we're doing, going around and doing these proclamations together, is very unusual for communities to have that kind of partnership. So we thank you for your time and all the efforts to make this possible.
Thank you very much. We appreciate so much your work. We really do. We know it makes a difference in our community to keep people safe. Thank you so much. And I want to say... I want to say a special thank you to the volunteers that work with our police department. I've met many of them. They will get up in the night and go out with an officer so that that person who has experienced that battering actually has a person not in a uniform, but who can sit with them and tell them about services and help them to feel much safer. And so thank you to our volunteers who may be watching this program on television, who knows. Anyway, we'll pass that thanks along to them as well. Okay. Oh, and the bridge, the railroad bridge is lit in purple in significance for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Okay, so go out and take a look at that bridge. All right, let's see what we have next here. Our reports from boards and commissions this evening, we have the Salem Social Service Contractor. Oh, sorry, we're jumping around. We have the presentation from the annual stream cleaning program results. Apologize to you. Okay. And who is here to present that report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Robert Chandler, the Interim Public Works Director, and I would like to introduce to Madam Mayor and the city councilors Luke Westfall, who will be making the presentation this evening on our 2011 Stream Cleaning Program. Luke is in his fifth year as a member of our Stream Cleaning Program. Two years as an environment, as a stream team member, two years as a crew lead, and this year as the environmental aide responsible for the work of the crew. As many of you may know, this program was begun in 1998 in response to the 1996 floods to clear the streams of debris as best we could to reduce the severity of future flooding events. Luke will tell you about the results from this year. This has been one of our successful programs. I will add that in the last 14 years, we have removed over 565,000 pounds of debris and trash out of our creeks. So with that, I'll turn the microphone over to Luke. Thanks, Luke.
Thank you, Robert. Can everybody hear me okay? First off, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone for the opportunity to share some information about the annual stream cleaning program and the successes and challenges from this year. As Robert mentioned, the Stream Cleaning Program was added to the city's stormwater management strategies in 1998, following the floods of 1996. Since the program's inception, many changes have occurred, including a shift from a crew of general laborers to one of college interns with educational backgrounds in the environmental sciences and natural resources. Adding this educational component to the position allows the crews to make critical field decisions that will have a lasting impact, not only on our stream flow, but on habitat as well. Additionally, Salem's creekside residents and property owners are always interested in the work that we do. They often want to know what can be done to make a difference along their stretch of creek, or share what they've done already, or even express some of their concerns. So by having a crew of educated interns, not only can they interact with the community members, but they can also offer their own unique perspectives based on actual coursework in fields such as botany, ecology, and riparian management. These types of interactions are what really allow the program to shine and to be so successful. Additionally, hiring a crew of local college students demonstrates that we value and rely on the relationships we build in the community. Currently, the program fulfills the best management practice of the city's federal stormwater permit, which mandates that we clean 50% of our creeks in the city and conduct an annual restoration project. So this year, our crew worked from June 22nd to September 23rd. During those three months, the crew cleaned nearly 50 of the 90 miles of creek within the city limits. From this map, you can see the extent of both the watersheds and the creeks within the city limits. The yellow lines designate the sections of creek that the crew cleaned this year. You can see pretty well that we cover a majority of the creeks throughout our city. So the 2011 Stream Crew began this season with four crew members and two crew leads, which is actually the smallest crew of any season so far. Two other interns were also hired to conduct GIS, GPS fieldwork relevant to the city's stormwater permit, and who also helped work with the cleaning crew as members returned to school. We had a great crew this season. It was wonderful to see that the crew members kept their spirits up, had smiles at the end of the day, regardless of being covered in mud and water and the difficult work that they accomplished on a daily basis. In total, our Stream Crew pulled over 9,000 pounds of trash from the creeks this year. The amounts removed from Little Pudding are shown as zero. These are actually cleaned by the stormwater operations and maintenance crews this year, and due to the nature of their daily work, it wasn't possible to separate out their numbers. On average, however, Little Pudding has about a half-ton of trash each season. So the crew defines trash as anything not natural that's found in the creeks. This ranges from mattresses and shopping carts to clothing and toys. One of the reasons the crew finds so much garbage is because certain areas of Salem's creeks, excuse me, creeks are prone to large amounts of waste being illegally dumped, and still others are prone to illicit uses, such as transient campsites. Now, since 1998, as Robert mentioned, the Stream Cleaning Crew has removed a total of over 565,000 pounds of trash from the creeks, which for the sake of perspective is about 200 Toyota Corollas. But what's really interesting, however, is that the general trend has been a decline in the amount of trash found in the city's creeks over the last 14 years. In particular, this has allowed for reductions in the size of our crews and also the increase of, while also increasing the miles of waterways that the crew actually gets to clean. These last two years have been the lowest trash levels yet. And I want to point out, this isn't due to the smaller crews not being able to remove what's there, rather it's that the usual dump sites are not as bad as they have been in the past. And some of the worst transient camps have actually been replaced with new construction, homes, businesses. And to me, it's really surprising that even during these tough economic times, we're not seeing the trash level spike, which demonstrates in my mind that the cleaning crew's hard work and the efforts for outreach of the stormwater quality services are succeeding. And I really hope that the trend continues. In 2009, the crew began sorting and recycling the trash removed from the creeks. This year, the crew continued those efforts, recycling everything from TVs, computers, to full-size refrigerators and food-grade plastic containers. Additionally, every season, the crew uses hundreds of large plastic bags to carry trash and debris out of the creeks. This year, the crew was able to recycle at least 90% of those plastic bags. This was the third year of our recycling efforts, and I definitely say it's been more than successful. In total, the crew recycled more than 3,000 pounds of material this summer, bringing the three-year total to over 12,000 pounds. Following the footsteps of the first year, we've continued to establish a strong standard for recycling for future crews. I'd like to touch on natural debris and green waste. This year, the crew removed about 95 cubic yards of vegetative and woody debris from Salem's creeks. The smaller creeks are prone to denser and invasive vegetation, which catches trash and other natural debris, eventually blocking flow, Himalayan blackberry being the main culprit. The blackberry is cut and removed to ensure proper stream flow, especially around culverts. This is actually done, however, without destroying the plant entirely, because what we've seen over time is that it's often the only vegetation providing erosion control and habitat along the stream banks. Debris jams are also a common occurrence, often a large log or fallen tree will accumulate debris, causing a water blockage. In many cases, some or most of a debris jam will be removed to reduce flooding potential. When possible, the crew leaves certain portions for habitat. So over the years, the program's approach toward managing natural debris has been an adaptive process. In the past, crews have cut or removed a majority of the woody debris and blackberry found in and near the water. However, while invasive, these plants are often the only source of erosion control in some areas, as well as bank stability, shade, and protection for habitat. So last year's crew in 2010 decided to cut less blackberry to protect those vital functions, and this year, we continued those efforts. Additionally, large debris jams were a challenge again this year. In a natural setting, these help to dissipate flow, slow water down to create pockets of beneficial aquatic habitat. However, in the urban environment, debris left unmanaged may increase the potential for flooding. And this is another way in which utilizing a crew with an educational background in environmental science and natural resources is a huge advantage for us. Crew members can assess each issue individually, considering not only the natural services a creek provides, but also the stream flow and surrounding urban environment to reach a solution. And so what this means is they're taking into account not only the health of the stream, but the safety of the businesses and homes that have built along the creek, excuse me, along the creek. Every year, the crew conducts an annual restoration project. In particular, we try to identify areas where invasive vegetation has taken over and where the property owner demonstrates interest and commitment to their reach of creek. These areas provide an excellent opportunity to replace the invasive vegetation with a native plant community. This year, the crew's enhancement site was a small intermittent reach of the west middle fork of Pringle Creek. The area was dense with invasive vegetation, including Himalayan blackberry, Tanzi ragwort, and poison hemlock. The crew worked diligently to remove the invasive species and brought in over 162 native plants, including small trees, shrubs, ground covers, as well as wetland sedges and rushes. They also seed the area with a variety of wetland grasses and wildflowers. The crew also installed erosion control matting, which will help to encourage the revegetation process. The crew's efforts worked to encourage a dense native plant community that will provide vital habitat, shade, and bank stability. Additionally, these annual restoration projects are an excellent way to get the community involved. The property owners were very excited to work with the crew and to work with the city to enhance their own stretch of creek, while the crew enjoyed designing an enhancement that benefited both the residents and the creek. In general, these projects allow the city to develop the kind of ties in the community which will help ensure successful collaborations for enhancing our watersheds in the future. Members of the Stream Crew also had opportunities to work on other smaller projects as a means to sort of round out the internship experience and to educate them further on functions of stormwater services. On a daily basis, the crew worked to identify illicit discharges and to report those to the city's environmental services. This function of the crew has been an amazing asset over the years. Oftentimes, they locate discharges into the creeks that may not have been sourced otherwise. Also, crew members were able to assist in the maintenance of some of the city's in-stream water quality monitoring stations. The crew enjoyed the experience and expressed a definite interest in the various aspects of the position. They also worked for a couple days assisting the wetland staff. In particular, they cleaned a section of the Claggett Creek wetland, which was mentioned a little earlier today, and even collected data on the invasives, invasive plant distributions therein. As mentioned earlier, two GIS interns were also hired to focus on special tasks for a duration of the summer. In particular, they used a GPS unit to collect data on the location of waterways where our prior GIS data was actually uncertain. This information proved to be very valuable and will be used to update the official maps used daily by the city's employees. Additionally, they were able to help the water quality staff by analyzing GIS data to determine the catch basin or drainage to their water quality monitoring stations. I was amazed by the GIS GPS crew this summer. They accomplished some great things and still found the time to work with the cleaning crew when we needed them. So I definitely thought this summer was a success. I worked with the crew on some of the most difficult stretches of creek this season, and I'm confident in the work that they've done. I personally saw the crew engage community members, make opportunities for dialogue and outreach. In particular, the annual restoration project was a great educational and outreach opportunity, and our crew did a really amazing job. I asked the crew what motivated them. There's a few examples up there, but for the most part, they identified their motivation as the opportunity to enhance their community. as the opportunity to enhance their community and our creeks, as well as the bond that formed between crew members working together in some pretty grimy situations trying to do some good. With that, I just wanted to say thank you again for the opportunity to share this year's results, and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks. Couple of quick questions. Where exactly on the west middle fork was that?
It was actually pretty far south, near Reed Lane. There's the Pringle Elementary School.
Uh huh.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, because I, it was like, because I used to work off that.
Where in the world is that?
I don't recognize those houses at all. And then secondly, we looked at the, you know, 9,000 and some pounds of debris pulled out. Would the majority of that be the big illegal stuff from the guy that can't take it anymore and hucks his TV off the bridge and refrigerators and things like that versus, you know, the standard littering?
Yeah, in my experience, the standard littering is going to be stuff like plastic bags, bottles, food containers, and things like that. And, I mean, they do add up, but not, not in the same way as, as a dump site.
Did we take advantage of the GPS and make a point where that illegal dumping drops to where we may be able to actually?
Our crews, our GPS crew had a pretty full schedule doing the other stuff, but we, we know just from our records where those are in general. And every year, the environmental aide makes, makes those sort of comments and suggestions for the, the crew next year, so we have that recorded.
It'd just be nice to catch those people. They irk me off.
Well, a lot of them, there was one in, along Claggett Creek, you know, near, was it Portland Road? And, you know, I think that's an area that we've seen decline, and I was looking through the news over the past, and they've actually posted signs and talked with that community. So there's definitely ways that it's been tackled.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your report and your work. Okay. Our next agenda item is a presentation from Mid Valley Women's Crisis Service. I believe Ms. Swanson, I think you're here to introduce Ms. Downing. Thank you. You come to the podium and, of course, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Denise Swanson. I work at United Way, 455 Blyler Avenue, Northeast. And I am your Salem Social Service Advisory Board Chair. So thank you, councilors, Madam Mayor, and staff. It's my pleasure, very timely, to introduce Mid Valley Women's Crisis Service. They are one of our funded organizations through the Social Service Advisory Board. We give them around $85,000 a year to do their very important work. It isn't nearly enough, obviously, based on some of the numbers that you heard today. And I'm going to turn it over to Executive Director Jane Downing to tell you what their program has accomplished over the last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Denise. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jane Downing. I am, the address for Mid Valley Women's Crisis Service is 795 Winter Street, Northeast. We're in Ward 1. And last year, I came to you and reported that we had seen a drastic increase in the number of contacts to our program. We had gone from an average of about 10,000 or 11,000 contacts for many years to more than 14,000 contacts. This year, that record was again shattered when we reached more than 19,500 contacts to our program. Our small staff of 10 individuals was running daily to meet the demand between our 24-hour crisis line, safe shelter, support groups, transitional housing, and community education. The reasons for this increase are that the poor economy has made it more difficult for victims to get housing and to find employment that they need in order to build their lives free of violence. And because unfortunately, since January of 2009, more than 100 women and children have been murdered due to domestic violence in the state of Oregon. Our program received numerous contacts from around the state from women afraid that they or their children would be the next ones to be murdered. This wave of domestic violence homicides has not stopped in Oregon, and we continue to try to meet the needs of those living in fear and desperation in our communities. In spite of how busy we are, we have actually expanded services to meet the needs of additional victims in our community. And through the efforts, efforts of our dedicated staff and volunteers, we have worked hard to reach all parts of the community with our message of hope and safety. Our bilingual advocates actually conducted outreach to more than 21 cities and towns in Marion County in the last year. Our efforts continue to meet the unique needs of victims of human trafficking, and our advocates who specialize in human trafficking were asked to provide training to thousands of individuals, businesses, social service organizations, and faith communities throughout the community. The Mid Valley Men Against Violence Group was formed, made up of a strong group of male leaders in our community. They are receiving training and providing opportunities for men to get involved. 16 men walked in the Kaiser-Iris Parade, and crowds present cheered their efforts to bring attention to men getting involved in the movement. The community has made, has many opportunities coming up to give support to our efforts. They can purchase purple lights and light up their homes. They can get those at our office. Purple Light Nights is a national campaign to draw attention to the issue of domestic violence. Many of you have seen the pedestrian rail bridge that is lit up purple. And I just, I want to draw attention to Peter Fernandez and Mark Bectell, who, from City, made all of that possible. I was traveling across the bridge about a year ago and thought, wouldn't it be wonderful if the rail bridge was lit up purple? And through their efforts and the city of Salem, that dream has become a reality, and we love seeing that reminder to the community. I have to tell you that a police officer recently told me that the first time they saw it, when they were going across the bridge, they almost ran off the side of the road because they were so shocked that the bridge was lit up in color. So it's, it's a wonderful reminder to our community that they really can make a difference. And then they also can get involved with the Mid Valley Men Against Violence Group, and then we have our annual fundraiser on Tuesday, December 6th, at 6:00 PM at the Willamette Heritage Center, formerly the Mission Mills. So we'd love for folks to join us for that. All of us at Mid Valley Women's Crisis Service are incredibly thankful to the community development block grant funds we receive for shelter services. We could tell you thousands of stories of hope and safety that were made possible by those funds. I want to share with you what one shelter resident wrote to us recently when she left shelter. "Your services are amazing. Because of your comfort, food, and all the necessities provided, I was able to process my thoughts and make a sound decision. I have tried to leave my partner before, but I have no family or friends. So I would end up returning to him in hopes of making things work to provide my children a family, a home, and work it out. This time, I was able to take my time and save moving money. I felt this time was different because I was still able to provide all my children needed, thanks to the center." Our thanks to each and every one of you. Your support makes it possible for us to provide a safe haven for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, and human trafficking in our community. I am happy to take any questions that you have about our program. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? Counselor Dickey and then Counselor Nanki.
Thanks for your explanation. That was really interesting. I'm curious about, do you do any, and I don't even know where, if you do this, but prevention of domestic violence. I mean, how, how do you get those phone calls actually reduced just because it's not as prevalent? Do you have any programs like that?
We do, actually. We have a very strong prevention program that, part of the Mid Valley Men Against Violence is having men be able to talk to other men about that it's not okay to do this, and how can, you know, how can you take a position? And so what's been shown to work is when the entire community says, that's not going to happen in our community. And so you build the strong programs like ours that can support victims and help them make informed choices for their future, and help children understand that they don't have to grow up and, and do that either. And then also have programs in place for community education. We, in the last several years, we train 4,000, 5,000 people a year, because we know the more that people understand the dynamics, the more they're going to turn to programs when they need it early on, and then also that the community says, we know what's happening here, and we actually can speak up and say, this can't happen in our community. So it's building that coordinated community response that we talked about earlier to be able to do that.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question, I always like to find out what you guys need most. Are there a couple of things that people in the community could just really help you with, and then how do they get them to you?
Absolutely. I love that question. We need pretty much anything that you need to run a household. We just need it 300 to 500 times over. And so think about what it takes to run a normal household. We need any of those items. We especially need, during this time of year, we need umbrellas for folks to be able to get back and forth to appointments and different things like that, baby strollers, diapers, anything that you can imagine that a household would need. We certainly can use those, and they can just bring them to our office at 795 Winter Street, Northeast. This time of year, pajamas are just a wonderful thing, you know, just think about cuddling up with something warm and nice, and that's especially important for our children. And about anywhere from 1/2 to 2/3 of our shelter residents are always children, so we can use anything for children that you have.
You still taking old cell phones as well?
We do. We take your used cell phones, bring them on down to our office. We give out hundreds of phones every year that they can only, we take off all the personal information, so you don't have to worry about that, and we give those out so they call 911 for safety for individuals in their homes. Absolutely. And they can bring those to our office also.
Counselor Clem.
Yes, Jane, thanks for your good work. To dovetail Counselor Nanki's point of the cell phones, those can be brought down to the Salem Police Department as well?
They can.
Can you help explain that City Hall is also a collecting place for the victims of domestic violence?
Absolutely. Used cell phones go to our program, they can go to the Salem Police Department through the Domestic Violence Response Team, and they give those out also. We coordinate those services also, so there's kind of no wrong door for folks being able to donate those cell phones for folks out in the community. So absolutely.
Okay. Other questions? All right. Thank you so much for coming, and thank you for the important work that you and your staff are doing.
Thank you for the opportunity. Good evenings.
Okay. I'm going to deviate a little from the agenda. We're going to go right now, we're going to continue on these presentations, and then after that, we're going to deviate a little bit. So I understand that we have a presentation by Denise Swanson regarding the United Way and 211. Oh, no!
Madam Mayor and Council, not Denise, this is Rena Peck with Urban Development. I will be introducing Denise with regards to the 211 program, but I'd like to just say a couple of things. As you're aware, staff has been working with local social service providers and partners to help with the implementation of the Ten Year Plan to End Homelessness. And this program also helps provide social service needs within the community. Through this, staff has also learned that access to the much-needed services has been a barrier to people who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. And in this current environment, you know, there's, services are much needed more than ever before. So before you tonight is a staff report that discusses the implementation of a 211 call center. The call center is like a one-stop shop for individuals who are looking for a service that they might need. The United Way has been the organization that has started that, that call center in the city of Salem, and so Denise Swanson is here to give you a little bit more information about that.
Thank you, Rena. Well, she almost did my whole job for me, so that makes it nice and easy. So, good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors, and staff. My name is Denise Swanson. I'm the Resource Development Director at your local United Way. And it is our pleasure to bring 211 forward to Marion and Polk Counties. We've been working on 211 for several years, and we piloted it in Yanville County about three years ago, getting ready to finally bring it to Marion and Polk County, which happened, it went live on September 12th. So I'm just going to give you a quick background, and we're going to have a couple of handouts. This is just the card, just so you can kind of see the quick and dirty about what 211 is about. So 211 is not a new thing. It was formed in 1996 out of a United Way office in Atlanta, Georgia. Currently, it is used by more than 83% of the population across the United States. So we've got more than 240 live call centers throughout the United States. And now, we are hoping to bring it statewide to Oregon by 2013 for the full state to be on. Right now, 28 states in our country have full coverage. In 2004, it started up in Portland. There are several different hotlines and warm lines that were together, and they formulated together to become 211 INFO. So 211 INFO is the specific 501(c)(3) that supports the 211 system. What happened with Portland is that they decided, when we looked at this statewide and we looked across the country, with our population concerns in Oregon, one of our concerns was, we're never going to be able to afford to build this call center. So how can we work around that? So what we decided was that we would have a central call center that's in the Portland metro area with localized data hubs that are in each of the communities across the state. So what that means is that we have one FTE, one full-time person, who is in charge of managing, inputting all the data into the system, training the call center on what goes on locally, how things are different in Salem, how it's different in Mount Angel, how it's different throughout all of our three counties, Marion Polk and Yanville County. That person also interfaces with all of our local agencies to keep the data up to date. So unlike a lot of resource directories that are immediately out of date, five minutes after you print them, our information is up to date on the moment, all the time. And at any moment, an agency can call our data manager and say, you know what, we don't have resources for that anymore, so could you take that down? So for instance, one of the number one calls is rent and utility assistance, and that's not just in our county, but throughout the state as well. And so if a program like Northwest Human Services or Community Action runs out of those dollars mid-month, then they can call or call our data hub manager and say, you know what, we're not going to have those dollars anymore, so let's take that service down for the rest of the month, and then we can re-put it up at the beginning of next month. And that's really important for clients, because that way, we're not sending people to a black hole. So why is 211 important to the city of Salem? Well, there's several reasons, really. First, it's an easy-to-remember three-digit number. It's free to callers. There's no cost for agencies to be listed as well. It's just an important piece for people to have when they're looking for services. You can imagine a person maybe who's never had to access social services, becomes unemployed, does not know how to really get through the maze of social services, and to be able to call a center that has a person who is trained in social service, who has a bachelor's in this work, and who has a compassionate voice and is willing to talk through, here's the different things. And they kind of do that first layer and unpeel the onion. So it's not just, okay, well, you need a place to, you know, a shelter to go to, here's eight numbers to call. It's, let's look at your situation. Do you have a family? That means this kind of shelter. Or are you a single man? That means this kind of shelter. So they're really kind of working through that first level of getting people to the right place when they call. It's a wonderful thing for our nonprofits, because what it's doing for them is it's helping them to be focused on mission. Every time a person comes to a nonprofit with an issue, they need more than what that nonprofit can serve. So it really helps them to focus on their issue and save money.
I'm going to have to say, excuse me, but you are out of time.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions? Counselor Clem?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Denise, why, why is it important that the 211 effort advanced? If I, you know, if I need rent or utility assistance now, why would it be better to dial 911 than it would be one of the rent utility assistance numbers? Help me understand how it really enhances the ability for folks to get services.
Thank you, Counselor Clem. So this is a great question. One of the things that 211 can do is offset calls that are inappropriate for 911. So there's a cost savings to 911. There's a cost savings to the agencies that would be taking calls for services that they don't provide, which happens quite often. And so, and there's a savings as well to municipalities such as the city, the counties, our small cities, because they're also dealing with quite a few people looking for services. There's a public safety issue with police and fire. When they're on a call, they're able to issue a 211 card and say, okay, well, this is what's happened. You can receive some social services by calling this number. And there's another really important issue that I didn't get to, and that is, in a time of disaster, 211 is an absolutely vital partner to 911 and to our municipalities, our volunteer centers, to get people the services that they need. So when we had the tornado in Almsville, you saw a lot of people on TV saying, I smell gas, I don't know where I'm going to go tonight, I need food, I don't have a place to stay. These are all things that can be held by 211. So in Katrina, in 9/11, in the fires in San Diego, in the floods that we just saw on the East Coast, 211 systems were there to be a vital support to the East Coast, 2-1-1 systems were there to be a vital support to people in disaster.
If I could, just one last question. It seems like a number of folks that were trying to get services didn't have one issue. They, it seems like Department of Human Services looked at, anytime somebody called, they found, oh my gosh, they've got three or four. So how, how will 2-1-1 help better connect folks with the services they need?
That's another great question. So often, as you said, they, they have multiple issues. And so what 2-1-1 can do is, because they're talking through this with people on the phone, they can say, okay, well, here's, let's talk about your issues. So you've lost your job, you can't pay the mortgage, here are some services that can help you do that. And then they'll ask the next question, which is, if you can't pay the mortgage, how are you doing on your utilities? What about food? Did you know that you might qualify for food stamps? Let's tell you how to get signed up for that. How are your children doing? So they kind of just unpeel all those layers and get people in the right direction so that they're not wasting time if they're, you know, trying to make multiple calls to multiple agencies. It helps to cut down and reduce on, on all that time. And the same for the agencies, the same for our governmental workers as well, that will be able to give one number when somebody calls and has issues. We can direct them to the 2-1-1 system. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, we appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to skip for a moment over public comment, which is number three, so that we can quickly get through our consent calendar. And Counselor Bennett, would you like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar with the following polls. 4.3F by Counselor Dickey.
Excuse me, go ahead.
Okay. And we have an addition we've not added yet, but I, I know we will. 4.3H by Counselor Cannon.
4.3?
H.
H, okay. Okay. I'm sorry, I was distracted while you were doing your, your motion. So did we have polls from?
We had, yes, both polls are 4.3F by Counselor Dickey.
Uh-huh.
And 4.3H by Counselor Cannon.
Okay. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Cannon to adopt the consent calendar with two polls of 4.3F and 4.3H. Is there discussion? Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to confirm, are any of the public comment items related to something we're voting on now?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't realize we had public comment items, so were there any, Mr. Tosh?
Before I vote, I want to make sure that if the public needs to be heard on any one of these items, that, that we appropriately, okay.
Can I back up?
We can back up.
Excuse me, that was my error.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to confuse it, I just want to make sure we hear from the public.
Right, all right.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Okay, we have people signed up for public comment. We have two people, Amel Graziani followed by Jeff Tross. Amel, welcome.
Well, Madam Mayor, City Council members, good evening. My name is Amel Graziani. I live at 1189 Resil Road, and I'm here to speak to the Gen Item 4.3F, Water Service Beyond Corporate Limits. The property in question is owned by my wife and me. The reason for this request is due to a failed well. The staff report covers issues, but let me highlight a few points. The well has, our well has had a problem since the very beginning, 1985. Sporadically, it would pump very brown water. This year, it went from sporadic to almost on a regular basis, it would fail. We sought solutions to this problem because basically it stopped being used for domestic purposes at that point. Water would need to be brought in, you need to go to the gym for showers, clothes, the laundry. There seem to be two possible solutions. One was to connect to the water system, there's a main right in front of our house, and the other was a new well. So we brought in a few people to take a look at that possibility. Resil in that area has, is notorious for problems with the well. He could dig a new well, he couldn't guarantee when they would find the water and whether the water would be of any good quality. In September, we began work with staff on the possibility of connecting to the water system. I should add that we quickly realized that this action is taken very infrequently and that it's not taken very lightly. The staff, Glenn Davis, Robin Bunsey, and later on Pamela Cole were extremely helpful, also empathetic to our situation. The staff report contains the details of what we experienced now on a regular basis. I didn't feel I wanted to go into those kind of details to spare you. I can assure you that I can, I can answer questions if you have something specific you want to know about that. Today, we completed the application and it has been submitted to the city and all fees have been paid in full. Take any questions you might have.
Are there questions for Mr. Graziani? Counselor Can, oh no, Counselor Dickey?
Thanks for coming down. You said you completed the application today, is that for water or have you applied for annexation?
Both.
Okay. Other questions? Counselor Cannon?
Could I ask the city attorney to tell me what the process is in this matter?
This is health hazard annexations. We have a letter from the Senatorian establishing that this situation is a health hazard annexation. Health hazard annexations are exempt from, from public vote under the charter. So we have a couple of provisions in our Chapter 165 that, that do apply in terms of determining what the zoning is. But if the, if both property owners consent to the annexation, there's no requirement of a public hearing on the annexation. Although if the property is located within a county service district, we will have to have a hearing on the withdrawal of that property from the district.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Cannon?
Are you located in a county service district providing you with sewer or water?
I'm not sure I can answer that question.
Well, let me, let me be a little bit helpful for you.
Okay.
Does, does the county send you a bill at any point in time for your water sewer service?
No, sir.
Okay. And you have a septic tank?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
That would also include fire districts.
Okay, well, is he in the Salem suburban on recent?
I believe I am.
Okay, thank you.
Other question? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming and appreciate your patience tonight.
Thank you.
Jeff Tross has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson, members of the council, good evening. My name is Jeff Tross, I'm a land use planning consultant. My office address is 1720 Liberty Street Southeast Salem, 97302, and I'm here tonight with regards to Item 11.2B on your agenda, which is the very last item on the agenda. And I'm also here on behalf of the owners of the property that is the subject of Item 11.2B, and the owners are the Larry and Jeanette Epping Foundation, which is a charitable foundation that operates here in the city of Salem. Mayor Peterson, you look like you had a question? If not, then I'll proceed.
No, no, no.
Thank you. I'll, see someone's left duct tape here so I can strap my hands down to the podium, something I've never done before, but it might be useful. Item 11.2B is a motion that is being presented by Counselor Dickey to remove this property from the Rose Gardens mixed-use area within the Portland Fairgrounds Road overlay district. This is a very important motion and a very important action, and we urge you to, to adopt the, the motion. This action is essential to encouraging development on this property, which has remained vacant for the 10 years that the overlay zone requirements have been in effect. In other words, the, the development requirements of the Rose Garden mixed-use area have worked to actually be an obstacle to the redevelopment of this property, which we believe is essential to the future of the Portland Fairgrounds Road corridor and the adjoining residential and commercial and industrial neighborhoods. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but my purpose in making this presentation is to offer our strong support to the motion that's going to be presented by Counselor Dickey. Can I answer any questions?
Counselor Cannon?
Is there any reason the applicant can't make an application to change the zone and have this removed?
We're not asking to change the zone on the property. It's a good question, and it involves a, a technical answer that I'll try to answer as concisely as possible. This property is zoned CR, Commercial Retail, that's the base zone, or also referred to as the underlying zone, the zone that underlies the overlay zone. We have underlying and overlaying zones. Within the Portland Fairgrounds Road overlay, there are three different separate mixed-use areas. One of them is the subject property, it's known as the Rose Garden Mixed Use Area, although it applies only to this one property and this one ownership. The development requirements of the Rose Garden Mixed Use Overlay are mandatory, they are not variable, they're not subject to deviation, they're things that have to be enacted. The applicant or the property owner could petition the Planning Commission or the council to initiate a zone code amendment or an amendment to the overlay zone to withdraw this property from that specific, what's known as Area 2, the Rose Gardens Overlay, but we'd be here doing the same thing. The council would still have to agree to initiate that amendment. The motion that's before you tonight is essentially the same thing.
Counselor Cannon?
There is a significant savings to the foundation to have the city initiate this process, is that not correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And how much money would that be involved?
I don't know what that would be, but it would certainly involve a great deal of the foundation's time to bring that proposal to the city, which would detract from its charitable purpose. Thank you.
Are there other questions for Mr. Tross? Yes, Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Jeff, for coming down and talking about this. So the entirety of the Epping property is the Rose Gardens Mixed Use Area?
Yes, that's right.
It doesn't extend out beyond that?
That's right.
And the property was in Epping Foundation ownership prior to that zoning being placed on it?
The zoning has been on the property all, ever since the foundation has owned it, yes. Now, if you clarify your question, I'm not sure I answered it. Are you asking if the Epping Foundation has owned the property ever since?
Did they own it and then had that put on after they came into ownership?
The overlay was placed on the property at the time the Epping Foundation owned the property.
Okay. Thank you.
I thought that's what you asked. You're welcome.
Counselor Bennett?
Well, just to follow up, then, what was the position when the overlay zone was placed on it? Do you know?
I, I don't know that personally. Mike Compton, who's the manager of the Epping Foundation Board, is with us this evening. He might be able to answer that question. I'm not sure any of us know that, that goes back 10 or 15 years now.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, further questions for Mr. Tross? All right, thank you very much, we appreciate you coming this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Since it's after 7:30, we're going to go now to the public hearing, and then we'll go back and do the consent calendar and the polls from the consent calendar and go on to other business after that.
I can't wait till we have the public hearing.
We're going to satisfy that right now. All right. We're going to be continuing a public hearing. Counselor Bennett, would you like to make a motion?
Yes.
On recommendation to continue a hearing until January 9th, 2012?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I so move.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to, to continue the public hearing until January 9th, 2012. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Yay?
Yay.
Yay. Those opposed say nay. Our next motion, our next item have, is the consent calendar. So Counselor Bennett, would you like to bring us a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd, yeah, I would. I'd like though to, I think, first move additions, deletions, and revisions. I, I'm not sure we got that, did we?
If you, if you move the consent calendar with the elite-
Will we pick it up?
With the corrections and the additions, you're fine.
I'll move the consent calendar with the corrections and additions as well as polls, still are we all, okay, polls on 4.3GF, rather, F by Counselor Dickey and H by Counselor Cannon.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Cannon to accept the consent calendar with exception, with additions, corrections, deletions, with the exception of Items 4.3F and 4.3H, which are being polled. Is there a discussion? Counselor Clausen and then Counselor Nanki?
I'm looking at the city attorney as I say this. On 4.3G is a matter concerning the school district, I think I need to make the statement that I work for the school district, but I do not believe it's going to impact my ability to vote on that.
All right. Thank you, so noted.
The issue, the issue is whether you'll have a direct or indirect financial benefit.
Correct, and I think we've discussed this, but I didn't get to talk to you before the meeting.
I don't, I don't think I need recues on this, do I?
You're, I will not answer that question on the floor. If you want to take a recess, we can talk about it.
It doesn't affect me in what I do at all, so I don't think there's an issue.
Okay, so noted. Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, similar potential, possibly conflict of interest. My wife works for Salem Kaiser School District and the Facilities Department as well, no pecuniary interest, and hence I shall participate in an unbiased manner.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor to accept the consent calendar with its additions, deletions, changes, et cetera, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now we'll deal with the two items that were pulled, 4.3F, and I don't remember who pulled that.
Counselor Dickey.
Counselor Dickey? Okay, Counselor Dickey, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Nanki to accept counselors, to accept staff recommendation on Item 4.3F. Is there discussion? Yes, Counselor Dickey?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just wanted a little clarification on the process of this. The city attorney did sort of clarify a little bit a couple minutes ago about this, but regarding the annexation that's concurrent with bringing this water service into the city, what's the timeline on that? I mean, does that happen at the same time the applications were filed concurrently? You know, how long would it be till that property's annexed versus when they get water? Can you just kind of explain that process?
Sure, at least I can explain the annexation part and I'll let someone else explain when the water service might occur. I think though that there's a condition in here that water service would, would be dependent upon the annexation. The annexation process, we don't have a local process for this kind of annexation, so we default to state law. And some of the specifics depend on the specifics of the property. It does sound like there would have to be a public hearing because there's a withdrawal from the fire district. So that requires that there be a hearing before the city council. I am guessing that it would be November or December before we get that before you in a public hearing. And then the action after that would be relatively fast.
That hearing does not have to occur prior to the annexation, though.
I stand corrected. You could just have that hearing any time later. I think that Mr. Chandler has a point, and then Counselor Cannon?
Yes, thank you. And the staff recommend- And the staff recommendation is that the water services be provided upon the complete application and payment of all the fees, which they have done. And this, again, is exempt from voter approval per Chapter 61 of our city charter. Just to clarify what Ms. Woods had said.
Can I follow?
Yes, Counselor Dickey.
So just to be clear, I still, I'm not sure if I understood correctly. The annexation will happen, and then the water is connected?
I'm sorry. No, in this case, we can give them water as soon as we can make the connection. They've embarked upon the process for annexation, and our staff recommendation is that we give them water as soon as we can. Annexation process to be followed.
And then when would the annexation be completed?
Ms. Woods had said we're not quite sure because of the process and the hearing and a possible fire district, possibly for the next two to three, it might take as many as two or three months to complete the annexation process.
Counselor Cannon and then Counselor Bennett.
Question of the city attorney. Following up on your explanation, since we have an applicant who has signed as the property owner and we have the payment of all fees, is the city code such that annexation has occurred even though we haven't had the public hearing on the district?
No, you have to adopt an ordinance annexing the property, and the annexation is actually not effective until that ordinance has been certified to the Secretary of State.
Which includes a legal description of the property--
That's correct. That's correct. So it takes a little time.
All right. So the process would be for us to initiate an ordinance, and then if we need to have a subsequent hearing on the fire district, we can do that?
Yes. My anticipation is that the ordinance has to contain the land use designations, and since there is no, my understanding is there's no zone change or comp plan change being sought, that it gets the equivalent designation. There are, like I said, there are parts of Chapter 165 that do apply to this. Then, so what would happen will be a staff report would be brought back. The staff report would introduce the ordinance, and if there's no requirement for hearing, you go through first and second reading. Then it would be provided to the Secretary of State, and at the time that the Secretary of State receives it, I believe the annexation becomes final.
Speaking to the motion?
Yes.
I think I've said, and I don't remember how many times, that I'm generally opposed to any annexation prior to, or any extension of services outside the urban growth or the city of Salem city limits prior to annexation. Get that all straight. This is an exception to the rule. I will vote in favor of this, but I'm going to have an amendment to the motion. If I get a second, I'll speak to that, too. The amendment would be that the applicant cannot agrees that the water will be immediately turned off if they seek to divide the property that they currently have, or if they stop or in any way hinder the annexation process, so they will not become members of the Salem city limits. So those would be my two provisions.
All right.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Cannon and seconded by Counselor Nanki to amend the motion. Counselor Cannon has just stated that amendment.
Speaking to the motion, essentially what I want to do is to require the applicants to agree that we will cut off the water if they try to further develop the property that they're on. So I don't want them circumventing the land use process that's in the city of Salem. The second process is that if they impede or in otherwise try to stop the annexation. So we'll provide you the water. I'm speaking directly to the applicants. We'll provide you the water. You've got to agree to it, and you can't do anything to try to stop us from annexing you into the city, and we'll try to get the water to you as soon as we can. So that's my motion.
All right.
The amended motion.
We have a motion on the floor, moved by Counselor Cannon, seconded by Counselor Nanki for the amendment. We'll vote. Is there further discussion on that amended motion? All right. Yes, Counselor, excuse me, Director Vicki Woods?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify your motion, Counselor. The land use action of dividing the property or taking some action, I assume, is intended to apply until they're actually in the city, after which they could develop or divide their land consistent with city rules and regulations.
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right. We're ready for the motion, for the vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye. No?
The amendment only.
To the amendment only. All those in favor of the amendment only, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. All right. Now we'll go back to the original motion, which I believe was made by Counselor Dickey and seconded by--
Myself.
I don't remember.
Counselor Nanki.
By Counselor Nanki. All right. Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Go ahead. You go first.
I don't have any.
No? All right. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and the city attorney is hiding from me. But there should be no reason we can't have the ordinance in front of the council in very short order. Would that not be an accurate statement? Like our next meeting? Not necessarily next week, but--
Unlikely at your next meeting. Probably, we're looking, I need your help on this.
We could have it November 7. Would that be?
I would have to check the notification requirements. I don't know what they are.
Yeah, we've got some issues. I mean, we'll get this done as quickly as we can.
And there's also, certifying the legal description takes some time, and I wouldn't want to make a promise that we could do it that quickly.
But we will move to get it on as quickly as we can within the time limits that we have.
And then a follow-up in regards to the Secretary of State. Typically, when the voters go through the voter-approved annexation process, that final removal from the service districts happened after the voters pass or fail the measure, correct?
That occurs in the ordinance. After the measure has been voted on, it comes back to you with an ordinance with the findings and land use approval and withdrawal from the district. So it's not, after the voters have voted, the annexation isn't finished until you've adopted the ordinance, and then the ordinance is what is provided to the Secretary of State, and that's what causes the annexation to become final. The voter approval is simply, it's okay for you guys to do the annexation.
I'm just kind of curious, then, in regards to the actual removal from a district and why that wouldn't be part of the ordinance, since that's always part of the voter-approved ordinances?
Well, you have to have a hearing. The statute doesn't require, the process for removing the property from a special service district is not linked to the annexation.
Okay.
You could conceivably remain within the special service district even though the property has been annexed.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay. We have a motion. Yes, Counselor Clem.
Madam Mayor, I just want to understand, if the council approves this motion, these folks can get water pretty soon, right? Okay. Thank you. I lost that.
Okay. The motion has been stated and restated, and the motion is on the floor. Any further discussion, questions? All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Okay. Okay, we have one other pulled item, right?
4.3H, which was on your additions calendar.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We have another item, 4.3H, and I believe the person who's going to speak to that is Counselor Cannon.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Who seconded it?
Clem.
Okay. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Please. This is one of those situations where I want to take at least 30 seconds and vent. The background of this, and I support staff's recommendation, excellent presentation here, but the background says, under a provision of the Passenger Rail Investment Improvement Act adopted by Congress in 2008, the states will be required to cover the full costs of paying for state-supported Amtrak routes, including, for the state of Oregon, Cascade Services, the Cascade daylight, from Eugene to Vancouver, B.C. by October 2013. This is, again, one opportunity for me to express my disapproval of the actions of Congress to require the states to pay for something, and the states have absolutely no ability to control where our money is being spent or how it's being spent. And I support staff's recommendation, the mayor's letter to our congressional group, but this is another one of those opportunities to say, I don't like this, folks, and I don't think it's fair.
Counselor Clem.
I just want to also point out that they've done the same thing with I-5. Essentially, regulate it, but then we pay for any of the improvements or any of the upkeep, maintenance. So this is very similar to a variety of transportation issues in our area, so I would second Counselor Cannon's good comments.
All right. It's been, is there further discussion? It's been moved by Counselor Cannon and seconded by Counselor Clem to adopt the staff recommendation on item 4.3H of having the mayor send a letter of support for Amtrak funding. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no unfinished business this evening, and we do have information. Do we have any questions about information reports? No? All right. We're going to go to ordinances. We'll now move to the first reading of ordinances. Will the recorder please read the title?
Ordinance Bill Number 32-11, AKA Portion Alley Right-of-Way located along the north property line of Pioneer and City View Cemeteries.
All right. Counselor Cannon, would you like to make a motion regarding Ordinance Bill Number 32-11?
Approve staff recommendation to recommend that the city council advance ordinance 32-11 to second reading for enactment.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Cannon and seconded by Counselor Nanki to approve the, to approve the motion. Is there a discussion? Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I was absent for the public hearing on this, so I will recuse myself on this issue.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Claussen.
I just have a quick question to throw out here on this one, and I'm just wondering if we might not, and I'm looking at Counselor Cannon while I say this, but I'm not thinking we need to change the motion, but I'm just wondering if we might not be going as far as we need to regarding my comments that were made during the public hearing, which is kicking the can down the road and not taking care of the whole issue. Should we not be looking at the entire alleyway that runs down the property all the way out to whatever the street is that runs east-west? Can't remember the name of the street.
That wasn't part of the petition, so you couldn't do the vacation.
I agree. I'm just wondering if this might be something we need to look at in the future.
City could initiate that, but it's not--
I don't know which--
--associated with the current land use.
It's not an issue for here and now. I think maybe I'm just going to make that statement and leave it out there, and maybe it can fester in the back of our minds that we do something with it later. So I'm in support.
All right. Okay. We're ready to vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. The next agenda item, our second readings of ordinances. Will the recorder please read the titles and take a roll call vote?
Ordinance Bill Number 30-11 relating to Measure 37, amending SRC 165.080 and repealing SRC Chapter 166. Counselor Claussen.
Aye.
Right, because we're rotating the votes.
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Cannon?
No.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler, absent. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
All right. The motion passes with Counselor Cannon voting no. I don't believe there's anyone signed up for public comment. I'm sorry?
We have two ordinances. We have one more. Another second reading.
Oh, there's a second ordinance? I'm sorry. All right. Recorder?
Ordinance Bill Number 31-11, granting a telecommunications franchise to Level 3 Communications LLC and declaring an emergency. Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Cannon?
No.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler, absent. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Claussen?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
All right. Ordinance Bill Number 31-11 passes with no vote by Counselor Cannon. Now we have public comment. I don't see anyone signed up on the list. Is there someone here who would like to speak? I have no mayor's items this evening. The next item is new business, a counselor's item. Which we removed from the agenda. Okay. And then, right. Thank you. Counselor Dickey, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. I move to direct staff to initiate an amendment to the Salem Revised Code to remove the Rose Gardens Mixed-Use Area from the Portland Fairgrounds Road Overlay Zone.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Clem to accept the motion regarding the removal of Rose Gardens Mixed-Use Area from the Portland Fairgrounds Road Overlay Zone. Is there discussion, Counselor Dickey?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'll just go over a little bit of this. We've already heard some of this tonight through some of our other discussion, but the Rose Gardens Mixed-Use Area is one of three subareas within the Greater Portland Road Overlay Zone. Kind of simply put, it's kind of an overlay over and overlay in very simplistic terms. Recently, the owner of the property had approached, and representatives of the owner had approached, the North Gateway Urban Renewal Advisory Board about removing the Rose Garden Overlay Zone to hopefully provide a little bit more flexibility of use with the property in hopes of it becoming developed. As you know, the North Gateway Urban Renewal Board has made completing Portland Road Phase 2 its highest priority, and in the middle of Portland Road, the southern part got completed, and then we lost our largest tax increment, which was SOMCO. And so it's been difficult to complete that process. And so any new development we can have there that brings jobs and creates property tax revenue will definitely help that area. The North Gateway Urban Renewal Advisory Board supports this. By removing the Rose Gardens Zone or the area from this, we still leave the Greater Portland Road Overlay Zone, which keeps it consistent with some of the design standards that you would see if you see some of the new development with Center 50+ and some of the other development that's just to the south of it. In addition to that, I've met with many people in the neighborhood. The representatives of the owner and the owner have visited the Neighborhood Association a couple of times, and while they did not send a letter in support of this, or they didn't actually take a position either way, have not heard any objections from neighborhood people. I've spoken with many people about this, just to say, you know, hey, what do you think? This seems to be the most-- This seems to be the most straightforward way to handle this, and we, I know in the neighborhood, would love to see this property become developed. By removing this, what we do open the door for is something like, I know the owner and the owner's representative have indicated maybe like a grocery store, which, a large grocery store, which we would be prohibited under the current Rose Garden Overlay Zone or something like that. So we're trying to think to the future, we still want to protect some of the, I would like to protect some of the design standards that are there, and so this seems to be about the best compromise to this. So that's...
Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Cannon. No, you don't want to speak. Okay, Counselor Cannon.
Addressing the motion, I'm not quite sure how I'm going to vote on this yet. I like the idea of taking the second overlay zone off of the property. The land use process is not one that I question at all. I do question the policy. Are we going to extend this principle to other developers who have other properties in the city, who come to us and say, "Please waive the fees so that we can move forward quickly"? I think there is a rule of unintended consequences here. City staff are going to be doing the work anyway, that's true. City staff won't be getting paid for this, and so we will have the opportunity of losing revenue. I think if we go down this road, we need to extend this same service and principle to other developers who have property in our community, who have an overlay zone or other zoning problem, and in order to develop their property more quickly, that the city will basically do the zone change work for them so that we'll allow for development in our community. Now, I think that that might not be a bad idea, quite frankly, but at any rate, that's the rule of unintended consequences that we're going down on this particular matter. Thank you.
Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Clausen, and then Counselor Nanki. All right.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I just want to clarify that the overlay zone that's being removed is actually precluding flexibility. I just want to confirm that a grocery store with the current overlay would not be allowed? And that if we remove the overlay, it would allow it?
It's the size.
The size, okay. And just a question real quick for staff. Is this zoning work or simply the administrative removal of an overlay?
I think, and maybe the city attorney can help me with this, but what technically, I think what's happening here is that you're amending the text of the zoning ordinance. You're not changing the zoning on the property, but you're removing some description about that zoning that's there. So it's like taking the CR zone and changing what the regulations are in the CR zone rather than changing a piece of property from CR to another zone.
That is correct.
So, so actually, I don't think that we have an application fee for that activity anyway, and I think it is probably appropriately initiated by a policy body or elected officials as yourselves to make those kinds of changes.
Yeah, a more appropriate way to think of these mixed-use zones is these are actually some separate development standards that are within the overall overlay zone. This is not a separate overlay zone within an overlay zone. So really, this is, I think, more properly thought of as an amendment to the development standards in the Portland Fairgrounds Road Overlay Zone.
Counselor Bennett.
I'm still digesting that. I guess the thing that, I hear what you're saying. I think you really, I think the city attorney, by his description, kind of explains just how exotic the underlying zoning overlay zone with another overlay zone on top of it is, that it's a fairly, a reasonably unique situation in the city in terms of a land use problem. And in an area like this, which, you know, for those of us who live probably in almost any part of town, we've got ourselves pretty much a grocery store desert. I think that's the term for it that's being used now around Salem, various parts of town, and this is one of those parts of town. This is an opportunity to go, to develop potentially, if everything holds true and Terry does her job well, and Jeff does his job well, and that we'll have a grocery store out there. I think it's just such a kind of unique, unique situation in terms of land use issues, and a unique situation in terms of the kind of development being sought here, that it just really makes sense to me. I, you know, at first you hear this, I had kind of the same reaction, but I think this is a really unusual situation and a real opportunity for North Gate neighborhood and for that corridor, I think, as Jeff described, to have development. That property has sat empty as long as I can remember. It has been empty, and I noticed it was recently mowed. It actually looks kind of nice right now. It's got a kind of pastoral feel to it. And it's pastoral because I don't know how many acres are involved here, what, 15 acres? Or how many acres are out there that we're doing this for?
14.
14. So it's really, I think, we're really meeting the, I think, the policy goals of the urban renewal area with this decision, and it's the kind of thing we would do as, I think, a policy matter related to any urban renewal area as well. This just strikes me as really making sense right now on this piece of property, and I would look forward to you bringing in motions for your developer friends on this in other cases, because I think that would make sense if you have cases like this. I would look forward to those motions. But this one, I think, is well worth supporting in this unique case, and then your unique case would be measured against that.
Counselor Clausen.
Just one thing that would separate this from a lot of other development proposals is that because of the size of this and the fact that this is a mixed-use development standard area, this is most likely a legislative amendment, whereas other types of amendments that might be brought forward could well be quasi-judicial. So that will dictate a difference in process and a difference in terms of criteria.
Just a moment. Counselor Clausen, and then Counselor Nanki, and then Counselor Clem. Okay. Pardon me? You're not, you're okay? All right. Counselor Clausen.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. I'm getting the zoning down pretty well. Once we get into these multiple layers, it throws me off. Is the, to the maker of the motion, is this the same motion that's in the report? Because in the report, it says to remove the area from the Portland Fairgrounds Road, but I heard amend one of...
No. The motion is to remove the Rose Gardens mixed-use area from the Portland Road Overlay Zone.
Okay, so I'm, because I heard a lot of more discussion about the Portland Road...
They're taking a layer off.
Yeah, so it's cutting it out of the Portland Fairgrounds. Okay, and then...
No.
Right, the Portland Road Fairgrounds Overlay still would exist.
Correct, but just not applicable to this piece of property.
No, it would apply to this property. Yeah, it's 11.2B.
I know, I'm reading it. To remove the Rose Garden mixed-use area from the Portland Fairgrounds Road Overlay Zone, that would say that you're keeping the Rose Garden mixed-use and taking it, that area, out of Portland Fairgrounds Road Overlay.
I think Ms. Witz can explain this. It's different layers of requirements.
My understanding of the intention here is that this would leave the underlying Portland Fairgrounds Road Overlay, but would do away with the Rose Gardens mixed-use area. And that was, I think, the intention of the motion, if it isn't stated as clearly as it should be.
It's in the discussion. It says it will ensure that the property remains within the broader overlay zone, where other development standards of the overlay zone will still be applicable to development. So it's just eliminating the Rose Garden mixed-use area from the text of the Portland Fairgrounds Overlay Zone. It's not removing the property from the overlay zone.
Okay. Sorry, it's a semantic, but it's a big difference.
No, you're correct to nail this down.
Okay, good. Then that's fine, and I like it that way. I just wanted to make sure that's what I was understanding. The second part of the question is to Counselor Cannon's question. How much are we talking, how much staff time and labor and equivalent reasonably idea of dollars are we talking about for something like this?
Ms. Witz? That's a really hard question to answer.
That can be real ballpark.
It, you know, if it goes smoothly, and we do some outreach with the neighborhood, which would be necessary, probably some outreach with the Urban Renewal Board, I don't know, there may be 60 hours' worth of work in this, 40 to 60 hours' worth of work in it. If it is controversial, creates problems, it could be, you know, five times out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question of staff, which is going to kind of come around sideways. It seems weird that a single property owner is the boundary for this overlay. Are there any vacant properties adjacent to this parcel?
I don't think so. Maybe there is. You know, you've got in your packet of information, there's an aerial that shows if there is vacant, it's very little, it's mostly developed all the way around.
And on the electronic version, you can't see that map at all.
Sorry.
So getting kind of back to that, not knowing why we would have put this on them and what their response might have been, did I not hear you once tell me that you didn't want any more overlay zones, per se, because we were kind of just shooting them out on different parcels all over town, and they may not all be the best practice?
Overlay zones make for administratively complicated codes, because they basically set specific regulations on individual pieces of property, and that is fraught with opportunities for staff to make mistakes, to miss something, and it's difficult to track those things down. On the other hand, overlay zones also offer an opportunity to achieve certain things where you're trying to in a specific area. When this was done, 10 or maybe, I think it started probably 15 years ago, it was the basis, we were looking at investing a lot of money in that urban renewal district to making improvements in this area, and there was a partner study done about, so what do we want to see here when we invest this money? And that's when that overlay zone was established. It had some kind of fundamental principles to it, that it was going to be pedestrian-oriented kind of area, and that there would be some mixed-use nodes concentrated within it, and that's what you see, are those three mixed-use nodes. One of them has actually developed into a mixed-use node. The Rose Garden mixed-use has not developed in that timeframe, so that it's, it's better not to have complicated zoning regulations, but if you want to achieve specific purposes on individual pieces of property, it's about the only tool you have to use.
Okay, and then one final question. Overlay zones apply to developed property already, even if it's residential, it's inside of a piece, so there's restrictions on other people rather than just new development-type activities, correct?
Overlay zones can apply wherever they get applied.
Just going back to the...
Developed or not.
Well, you know, all the development communities, like, it's not just development.
True, that's true. That's true.
Other people are having to live by certain requirements.
Yes, in many places that are undeveloped property.
Thanks.
All right, Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to confirm what I heard earlier to city attorney, that this is likely uniquely different than what other developers may bring forward, because it's like, it's a legislative amendment and not a quasi-judicial, or that the others would likely be quasi-judicial? Because of the unique posture of this, this is most likely legislative. If another developer came in with a proposal for, say, a five-acre piece of property, that would almost certainly be quasi-judicial. Okay. And want to also confirm what's something that Vicky had said, that we do not, the city does not have currently a fee or a process for a property owner affected by one of these overlays to effect some change. There's, is there an application or a fee process?
It's going to depend on the specific overlay and how it's developed in the code, but in this overlay, as the city attorney pointed out, it's really a development regulation that's in that overlay zone that's being changed here.
So how does the public change the development regulation?
Through their elected officials.
And that's exactly what's happening here. And so I'm more concerned, not so much about the staff time that it could cost, because there's lots of staff actions take 40 to 60 hours. I'm more worried about how much money we've spent over all the years creating all these parcel-only overlays, and how do we remove the cost of doing business with city government? So I'd be supportive of all applicants who come forward and say, gee, can you, can you find a way to remove all this stuff you've piled on the last 10 years? Well, a number of the overlays were actually instituted to preserve existing uses. They were there, they were placed there to benefit owners of property, so they did more than, I mean, typically what would happen is you'd have grandfathered, you'd have non-conforming use, but they'd be grandfathered in, and what a number of the overlay zones do is they actually go in and they allow that, they create that use as an allowed use.
Some of those are in West Salem.
Yeah. It's a complicated, the city's overlay zones have a complicated mix of policy objectives.
Counselor Clausen, and then Counselor Dickey.
All right, I'm almost to the top of the hill, and I feel an aha moment coming on. So we have the Fairgrounds Portland Road mixed-use zone, and a subsection of, or the Portland Fairgrounds overlay, a subsection is the Rose Garden mixed-use area.
That's correct.
Ah ha! Thank you. Short of seeing that, I didn't understand that in the, in the motion or in what was provided, so thank you.
Counselor Dickey.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to say, in regards to the staff time, you know, I have really high hopes in Terry and in Jeff, that by doing this, we will be able to bring more jobs to Salem and to that area, so hopefully this will be a win-win for everyone.
Here, here. Now we will vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And no further business. We are adjourned.